And I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the Town of Sykesville Mayor and Town Council Meeting. Today is Monday, June twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, and I will officially call the meeting to order at seven oh two P M. This meeting is being streamed live to the Carroll Media Center's YouTube channel, as well as the town's Facebook page, and will be available for playback on both formats. Uh, we begin our meeting this evening as we do with all meetings with the present allegiance of by in the moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In that moment of silence, please. Okay. Our first item on the agenda is public comments. There are a handful of people here. Are any of them signed up for public comments, Joe?
No one has signed up.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to our consent agenda. I'll read those items and then I'll ask for a motion for all three unless someone wants to pull one of these items from the agenda, at which time we'll have to vote on each of them separately. The first are the minutes from May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. The second item on the consent agenda is for the reappointment of Alex Reeves to the Park and Recreation Commission for a three-year term expiring in April, two thousand and twenty-six. And the third item on the consent agenda is the appointment of Brian Ball to the Historic District Commission for a three-year term expiring June, two thousand and twenty-six. Any questions, any reasons to discuss any of these items? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Thank you.
Second.
Awesome. So we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, first made by Councilmember Grassley and seconded by Councilmember Schofield. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that's unanimous. The consent agenda passes seven to oh. Our next item of business is unfinished business. It is a public hearing, uh, and also to consider, discuss, and act upon ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash oh three, which is the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget revision, most likely the last of the fiscal year. I hope so. This is our last meeting of the fiscal year. Uh, so a little bit of background on this, uh, item. As we approach the end of the fiscal year, several budget categories need to be adjusted to properly account for current and expected revenues and expenses for the remainder of the fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-three. This document includes an overall decrease in spending of three hundred thirty-five thousand, four hundred fifty dollars, largely due to several capital projects unfortunately having to be pushed to fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. And beyond that, Joe, I know we haven't had any updates or changes beyond the revision itself that we discussed and introduced, uh, two weeks ago. You want to give us a little more high points if there are any?
Again, uh, it really is, uh, all to do with the capital projects. And again, several of those, uh, really have to do with some of the engineering efforts that we have ongoing, mainly for the Sandeski lot and front lawn, as well as the Baldwin Drive of Avenue projects and then, uh, the stormwater, the two stormwater projects that we have. So again, uh, most of that production is related just directly to those, um, uh, those capital projects. So everything else is, uh, really just a matter of accounting. Uh, it's just a few things here and there that, uh, either we had to adjust up or down in any particular category to account for spending that we've already done.
Okay, thank you. Um, so at this point, uh, we need to have a, a public hearing on this matter. And, um, before doing so, if there are any questions for staff that would put the education of the public, otherwise I'll ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance two oh two-three dash oh three.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Dyer. So the, uh, motion is to open the public hearing on ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash oh three. The, the motion made by Councilmember Grassley and seconded by Councilmember Dyer. All in favor of opening the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any signal? All right, we are open for public comment on this ordinance, uh, at seven oh six. Are there any public comments?
Any other, uh, public comments, Joe, from the, uh, emails or anything or any phone calls except for that one that was?
No.
Okay, so hearing done. Is there a motion to close this public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing on ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash oh three.
Thank you, Councilmember Grassley, and seconded by Councilmember Dyer. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. We are closing at seven oh six and forty-five seconds. Um, and so now we will actually act upon ordinance, uh, two thousand and twenty-three dash oh three fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-three budget revision. And at this point, I'll ask if the council have any questions for staff regarding the proposed ordinance.
Motion to approve ordinance number two oh two-three dash oh three.
There's the motion. Do we have a second? Thank you, Councilmember Dyer. So that motion for the, uh, record was made, uh, to, uh, approve ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash oh three fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-three budget revision by Councilmember Grassley and seconded by Councilmember Dyer. Uh, with no further discussion, uh, is there anyone here that needs to, uh, debate their forthcoming vote prior to taking a vote itself?
Not a debate, but I'd like to comment that it's a decrease of six point nine-nine percent. That's a wonderful thing. I'm all, I'm just all about it.
I just love that it's six point nine-nine and, and not rounded up.
My wife recently said, I noticed you said something, something in twenty-nine minutes. Everyone else, yeah, I know.
Okay, so now we're at the point where I actually call for a vote. All in favor of the motion on the table to approve ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash oh three fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-three budget revision, please raise your hand and signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And that also is a unanimous decision. The ordinance has been approved. And we are on the move. Next item of business is new business, and it is to consider, discuss, and act on Michael Baker International On-Call Professional Service Agreement, Services Agreement and the Associated, Associated Work Order Number One titled Creation of a Unified Development Ordinance. A little, uh, summary here on this item on the agenda is that, uh, we all have been provided with and the public has access to the, uh, service agreement with Michael Baker International that we refer to easily as M B I, uh, that will allow the town to move forward on the established goal of updating the current zoning and some division regulations. The on-call agreement will also allow the town, should it be necessary, and with council approval of specific work requests, to use M B I on other potential planning-related projects, such as transportation planning, parks master planning, and grant writing. Joe, any deeper dive you'd like to provide for us, please?
Uh, really just to reiterate that Michael Baker International is the same firm that, uh, helped us out with our comprehensive plan a few years ago. This is again, this is why we reached out to them specifically for that. So again, there was a, uh, R F P process when we went through the comprehensive planning phase. We did not do a specific R F P for this just because we do know Michael Baker and they, they, we liked the work they did for our comprehensive plans. We figured that we could give them the best shot or the, uh, given their familiarity with us, they'll, they'll be able to kind of hit the ground running with these zoning ordinance rewrite.
Okay.
And again, there has been a relationship in the past, uh, with, uh, some of the principals there at Baker that I've used and I've been very happy with their work. So again, that's why we're working forward. Uh, again, this is, uh, to update our, uh, really outdated zoning ordinance so that we can kind of bring it up to a more modern code. Um, yeah, we, we can't do this kind of work in-house, uh, on, on our own, so we were gonna need some sort of consulting work. So one of the ways, uh, I like to justify the cost of these types of contracts to say, just consider this basically a, an employee that we're gonna be paying over the, over two years. Instead, instead of just having one employee, we have a whole company that's gonna be coming in and helping us with this work. Um, so it is, uh, the, uh, Work Order Number One is scheduled to be roughly an eighteen-month process. Uh, that's a little longer, uh, than what our comprehensive plan took. But again, we're starting to talk about zoning ordinance rewrite. You're getting into more of the details and, and really kind of the nitty-gritty elements of things, uh, as to how the town's gonna be built. Comprehensive plan was more aspirational, more vision setting. This is getting into the weeds and everything. That's why it's gonna take a little longer.
Understood.
Um, so it is a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar contract, but, uh, the council with their adoption of the F Y twenty-four budget did, uh, account for roughly half of that cost. Uh, so again, it will span several fiscal years to, to complete this project. Um, and again, we'll, we'll budget for the rest of that in, uh, at block seventy-five. So, uh, if there's not any other questions, the town is obviously, or town staff is, uh, ready to make the recommendation that, uh, we move forward with this contract with Michael Baker and hopefully get them started in July to, uh, to get the rewrite, uh, project kicked off.
Wonderful. So before a motion, any questions?
So Joe, Joe, is it, uh, is it totally doing zoning all over, like a brand-new zoning?
In all likelihood, the, uh, the code itself is gonna be, again, you don't, I don't wanna make assumptions, but in all likelihood, it's gonna be rewritten.
Totally different.
Totally different. Now, that doesn't mean that every zone is gonna change significantly, uh, just like a new package in a way that's a little easier to understand and a little easier to follow. Um, so again, I mean, you take the residential sections. We're gonna probably keep most of the residential sections the way that you see them today. However, we'll make sure like those bulk standards that define those, uh, those specific areas matched with what we have in town rather than, um, again, one of the examples I like to give is a lot of, uh, what's referred to as Newtown was developed under the, uh, Small Town Planning Guidelines. So again, it was like these, uh, or smart code guidelines, which allowed you to kind of set different setbacks and different standards for the lots when that plat would come in for approval. Um, but when you look at the actual designated setbacks for that particular district, they don't match anymore. So it's like we have to actually go back to the plat and find, okay, what were the setbacks when this was actually approved? Um, so again, we can, we can fix all of that with a revision like this. So again, when I say it's, we're gonna be tweaking every single zone, those are probably the changes we're gonna be making, but it's not necessarily gonna stop somebody from being able to build or, you know, put a deck on their, the back of their house or do, do anything like that. It's just making it, making our code more up to date with what we're currently doing.
Got it. So it'd just be one layer of code?
That's the, that's the goal.
That's the goal. All right, great.
Can it overlay districts?
I'm just gonna say why? We love those overlays.
That's awesome.
I have one quick question. Uh, and I, I, when they did the comprehensive plan, they did a great job and I think they'll do a great job for us here. I'm just surprised, having been in the federal government, section twelve suspension and termination seem unusually vague for at least a federal contract. Is this standard at the town level? It says things like shall be paid an equitable amount. I'm gonna guess G E's aerospace division will have a very different view than maybe Michael Baker.
Well, and the idea is that anything that they've, uh, they've incurred up to that point of termination, we can have to pay.
Naturally.
That's typically the interpretation.
So, um, this is standard?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, never mind.
That's a good question. Thank you.
Yeah, I had a question in reference to, uh, the staff report. Uh, it talks about legal review, that no legal review was performed, but it says legal review and participation in project will be essential. Do you have a sense of, uh, amount of legal review that will be needed from a cost perspective? I mean, there's other conversations going on for other things that we're doing from a legal perspective. And if this adds on to, I was just wondering, is this gonna be big, little, medium?
I, I'm, I'm not expecting a significant expense. I mean, it's, it's gonna take some staff hour or some, uh, legal staff hours. Um, but I don't think it's something that's gonna drive the budget number.
Thank you, Councilmember.
And then I have a question. Um, due to the amount of the contract, legally, do we not have to put it up for R F P? I, I was under the assumption that if it's over a certain amount, it has to be up for R F P.
For service contracts, you do not have to do an R F P. It's like if it was a construction contract, that was obviously anything over ten thousand dollars, that has to be put out to bid for, for a public bid. But for service contracts, because the idea behind a service contract is you're looking for the best person that can actually, the best company that can provide that regardless of cost.
Okay.
Kind of like when we hired a new lawyer.
Correct.
We didn't go out to R F P.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
True.
Did, did you reach out to anybody else or do you, do you have any dealings with anybody else? I mean, I know like this, these guys and they did a great job on the, uh, compliance of.
We, we did not ask anybody else to submit any kind of cost proposals.
Okay.
Any other questions to my right? Nope, great. Okay, well then it's time for our motion so we can take action. Um, I can read that motion if you like?
I can do it.
Okay.
I move to approve the on-call professional services agreement with Michael Baker International and Work Order Number One, Creation of a Unified Development Ordinance as presented and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, so we have, uh, the motion, which I will repeat for the purpose of our vote that's forthcoming, is to approve the on-call professional services agreement with Michael Baker International and Work Order Number One, Creation of Unified Development Ordinance as presented and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. That motion was made by Councilmember Schofield and seconded by Councilmember, I believe it was Leo.
Yep.
Uh, Councilmember Keenan, uh, and at this time I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the approval of the motion on the table, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
And again, that's a unanimous vote. No need to take a nay vote, and that's a unanimous, uh, approval of the motion. Thank you, sir. Thank you for the, uh, background work. This has been, uh, several weeks in the making, so I appreciate that. Um, okay, so that brings us to one of the final portions, or I guess before adjournment, the, uh, last items, uh, on our, uh, agenda. Uh, first is the announcement that next meeting is scheduled for Monday, July tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, we have volunteer opportunities available on the Historic District Commission. I believe we're just down to one seat left.
One seat on the.
I may have filled that this weekend. Yes, with an architect. Um, she's also up for grabs for the Plan, Planning Commission, so we'll have to talk about that, uh, with staff. So we have volunteer opportunities available on the Historic District Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, and Police Auxiliary. If interested in any of these opportunities, please email the town at town@sykesville.net for more information about those. That brings us to staff updates and our man in yellow, our treasurer, Craig, please provide the council with all of your goodies on the treasurer report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see everybody here. Um, at this time, I'd like to present the May treasurer's report. You might want to look at it again because within the last ten minutes, I was able to update the report based on the budget revision in ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash oh three.
You are very swift. Thank you.
Seriously, I, I kind of jumped the gun and managed to, was just kind of banking that you guys were through that. So I, that was my error and I promise not to do that again. So anyway, so through May, eleven months, we're in really good shape. Our revenues are exceeding expenditures about two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Um, and that's receiving, we did receive the May income tax, uh, revenue, excuse me, for two hundred and thirty-three thousand. It almost got us up to budget now with probably another, at least one other payment in June, uh, which will be probably around a dollar amount. Hoping, and as well as we got the.
So does that mean that we're halfway caught up on what we did for the five hundred thousand for D S C? Does that mean that in the first year?
Hopefully caught up.
So it's five hundred thousand that we, I just, I'm trying to track with the money.
I mean, there's still gonna be expenses that we have for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Okay.
We still have another month, so I don't wanna count that just yet.
Okay, so don't count the chickens before that.
Right. We're chasing those chickens, though.
I, I will jump in, uh, before Craig finishes and just say, so likely in July, you're not gonna see, uh, a treasurer's report at that meeting because it will be year end. So when you see the F Y twenty-three year-end report in August, we'll, we should have that number. And you'll say, okay, this is something that we can, we will, we'll be carrying over.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Uh, as well as we also got the February highway user revenue of about thirty-three thousand. So we still got March, April, May, June, four months more for the highway user revenue, which hopefully gets to the budget, that what it looks like right now. Um, the check register beyond normal course of business really wasn't much going on. Um, A D L heating, sixty-six hundred for the new a, a, uh, air conditioning system in the gatehouse, as well as, uh, Derek did his magic again, was able to purchase a used oh-eight international dump truck from Carroll County Commission for forty-five hundred when those things are worth, I don't know, what would we budget, like sixty thousand?
We'd budget thirty, so, yeah.
Yeah, so another good deal. Derek's on fire, that kind of stuff. Be a part-time business for him now. I think we could open up some type of auctions.
There are some improvements that have to be done with the trucks, so.
I won't be free.
Four hundred and done, right? But we'll still be well under the.
It'll still be a good deal.
Yeah.
Still be a good deal.
Yeah.
And then we had a few expenses under the facade grant program with, uh, Frank Ossage and Scott Jendrick for New Science of the Story. Other than that, like I said, eleven months, feel really good about what the numbers look like. I don't know if you did, get a chance to really review.
Yes.
So at this time, uh, any other questions for I, for me?
No, it does seem like we're gonna have a lot of, uh, extra money left over just going into the last month, like I'm just looking at.
Extra money?
Currently on.
I mean, just the public works alone. It's, there's still ninety-three thousand, so.
I mean, obviously.
We're gonna have that conversation in September, remember? We're gonna.
That's true.
We're gonna bang that out and figure out, is there anything that we need to change or keep going or whatever?
We'll have some expenses in June, obviously, just pan that down a little, salaries, et cetera.
Okay, cool. Anyone here on my left? Okay, thank you, Mr. Treasurer, Craig.
No, thank you.
Appreciate you.
It's my pleasure.
That brings us to our public safety report. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Kind of wondering why Derek works his magic and you have a prince on your.
You get props every week.
All right, fair enough, Craig. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We're gonna discuss the public safety report covering about three weeks, May sixteenth through June fifth. As you can tell, was a very busy time for us. Seven hundred and eleven total events, um, just a few of the highlights, uh, which have already been remarked on by, by a few of you. Twenty-eight community policing events initiatives during that period was excellent work by, uh, several of the officers who were in attendance, uh, this evening. Uh, three hundred and twenty-two patrol checks and forty-six traffic enforcement initiatives. Uh, during that same period, we were very busy in terms of reports, handling, uh, twenty-three incident reports. Um, so busy time, doing great work, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have about any of the incident reports.
No, I don't want.
Let me also.
So not a question in reference to incident reports, but I do have to comment on twenty-eight community policing events. It's absolutely fantastic. Uh, just a big thank you from, I know, all of us to the officers. Thank you so much.
You see the, the same names on there, Jacobs and Young and Picardo, um, Happa. Uh, all of our younger officers are doing phenomenal job.
Yeah, but it's different things they're doing, right, in the community, which that diversity of things that they're doing is, uh, noticeable.
I mean, I've been looking for somebody to play, literally, for somebody to play catch with me, football in my yard for nineteen years.
Just need to call Officer Picardo.
I even recruited my little neighbor when he was ten. I, I'm still looking. So Officer Picardo can come up to Spout Hill and I'll have the football pumped up.
Excellent.
All right.
I'll send him. He'll, he'll be eager to show up.
It is a Steelers football.
That's a problem.
Yeah. That could be it.
I enjoy the pictures.
Yes, it's a good touch, yeah. We will do that, yeah. We try to document as many of these things as we can with photographs and for our end of, end of the year party and, and put on social media and that sort of thing, so.
One of the reasons, many reasons why probably all of us moved into a town like this is just, it's me burying. It, when an officer can come and play football, play catch, hand out things, that's, that's, that's what it means.
But it, it, it obviously with the goal being that, that, the, the public, um, gets to see everyone in blue when there's good things going on, it's not just when there's trouble and, uh, and we're meeting them for different reasons, so. Uh, and I know that it has an effect on, on the crime rate, so I'm very grateful.
And, and I think a lot of it has to do with Chief. It's, it's a different environment, um, when we moved in in ninety-nine. Um, different police department environment, so.
Glad to hear that.
I think, uh, you get all the credit for that.
Thank you, thank you. That goes to the officers.
And that number twenty-eight because we're almost fully staffed, so, you know, just saying, that's important. Okay.
Just a few quick things I just wanted to bring to your attention. Uh, we are participating in the torch run tomorrow. Actually, auxiliary officer Haley is going to be there with us. Uh, myself and several of our officers will be engaging in the, not necessarily running, I'm not promising you that, but some aspect of the torch run, whether it's the run, the walk, or being there for the, uh, award ceremony at eleven-thirty. So it's, it's a great event. We've actually adopted one of the, uh, special Olympic athletes this year who will be riding with me. And so it's, it's a great event and it's a good time and something we look forward to every year.
That's lovely.
And the last thing I wanted to mention, for those of you who are coming to the M M L Summer Conference, big news. Uh, after repeated attempts, the governor has agreed to come to our breakfast.
All right.
So put that on your calendars for Tuesday, June twenty-seventh from seven-thirty. I know it's a little early, but it'd be worthwhile, I, I promise you. Seven-thirty to nine.
It's an easy commute.
Yeah, 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 you'll be there, right?
Yes.
Seven-thirty to nine in rooms two oh five and two oh six. And again, I think I mentioned this one other time, but the top cop breakfast is to recognize our, our top cop, which was chosen by our Maryland Municipal League Police Executive Association. And this year it's Officer Corporal Michael Schler from the Sykesville Police Department, so it'll be very nice, very, very nice ceremony.
I'm looking forward to it.
I'd be glad to have you there, here.
I'll be there.
Get up that early.
I'll be there, yes. Thank you, Chief.
Awesome. Anything else for me?
Not a, great, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
That brings us to council and committee reports. Does anyone have specific updates to share with the public regarding the commissions to which you are a liaison?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, just a couple, uh, for the downtown Sykesville connection. Got the Juneteenth event coming up, the Saturday, the seventeenth, and the details of the event can be found on the D S A website or their Facebook page. Everyone is welcome. Um, as Mayor Link mentioned at the beginning, um, the hometown heroes banners are finally coming. Um, there was an announcement made on June seventh, and applications are available on the downtown Sykesville Connection website. Uh, the applications close on July twelfth so that the flags can be produced and hung by Labor Day. They'll run from Labor Day to Veterans Day on the, on, along Main Street.
Yep, that's right.
And the plan for next year possibly is, um, flags during the summer and then the hometown heroes banners again in the fall, up, up through Veterans Day. And the Sykesville Pride Event was attended, uh, what was well-attended and a fun day for all. Uh, a lot of people got pictures with the Maryland cutouts. I saw those. Um, at least three hundred people visited downtown Sykesville for the event. There was a lot of media coverage of the event. Um, and I'm sure everybody saw the colorful windows and all the participation from the Main Street businesses. Uh, Carroll County Times had an article about it. There was a feature on eleven P M News on W M A R the night before and six P M on W J Z last week, so it was well-attended and well-covered. Um, I, I saved that one for last because I do want to mention one thing. I was, there was an incident where last Wednesday, my wife and I were down at the Fountain Park for, we were eating ice cream at the Fountain Park about seven o'clock. And there were rainbow bunting around the fencing of the Fountain Park, and I happened to notice someone was on the ground. And unfortunately, some of it, it was clear it had been torn down, and it was, it was very disappointing. And, uh, Julie had that, I contacted Julie and she decided, she made the decision to just take it all down in case anybody was wondering what happened to it, where, where it went, because it was pretty prominent at one point, but she made the decision to take it all down before anything else happened, so.
Yeah, Flatman Air was pretty, pretty ticked off about that.
Yep.
Yeah, you know, Flatman Air, like Flat Stanley, yeah.
Yep.
Flatman Air was very upset about that.
Yep.
So was Mayor, like, yeah. But anyway, I, I appreciate you letting people know that's why it disappeared before the month was.
Very, very disappointing.
Yeah. Uh, otherwise, I think it was a really great day.
It was.
All of, all that I've read and, and got to see from pictures, so.
Yep, a lot of families. Yep, very nice.
Yeah, we were down there. It's amazing about, I mean, the, the work that went into it was obvious and the atmosphere was great.
Yep.
And thank you on the veterans' flags and all that, so important.
It's been a lot of work, so again, the, um.
And there, and there's been years of, I know, them working to try and figure it all out, so thank you so much.
Yep, so again, the, um, applications for that close on July twelfth, but, uh, you can go to the downtown Sykesville Connection website.
Yeah, I get the red on that because I believe there's twenty locations, so we'd like to see all twenty locations filled up with, with hometown hero banners. Okey-dokey.
I have one update as well from the planning commission.
Thank you.
Um, so it was a short planning commission meeting, this last planning commission meeting, but it was an important one. Uh, the planning commissioners were going through the process for, uh, navigating through the P E C plan. We do anticipate getting in, well, I think the town's already received the plan for, uh, forty-seven new townhomes to be built at the park side by, the enclave by the park side, which is the property that used to be, uh, the integrated property that's now owned by the, uh, other developer. Uh, we expect to start the process of the review at the next planning commission meeting, uh, which would be, um.
July fifth.
July fifth. Thank you, Joe. So I just want to make sure that you're situationally aware, uh, you may want to keep your eyes on that. And for the public, you may want to keep your eyes on how that process goes as well. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the update on the planning commission. Anything, uh, of parks and rec?
Okay, so, um, Splash Park is open.
It is. It sure is.
And well-attended. Every time I walk past the park, it's very full, so thank you. Um, and then we had our first meet, uh, movie, Space Jam, the original, uh, last Saturday, also very well-attended. And in, uh, July on the eighth, we have the, uh, Muppets Christmas Carol.
Because it's Christmas in.
This is July.
July, so, all right, all right.
Yeah. You'll be there for that?
Yeah.
And thank you for opening Splash Park. That was great.
That was exciting.
It's cold.
That was the reason why you were solo. No, I was actually out of town, but, um, I wouldn't have done it. It was too cold. No, I was actually out of town, but, um, I wouldn't have done it. It was too cold.
Oh, God, I was just going to say, you must fly. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt the, uh.
No, 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 I appreciate you doing, it was appreciated, very appreciated.
Anyone else from a, uh, commission liaison position? Otherwise?
I have something.
Okay.
Free cable. No, unfortunately, one of the cable packages is about to go up by a dollar. You know, the chief mentioned that there's been some fraud and some online problems. There is an organization in Westminster called the Mid-Atlantic Gigabit In- Innovation Collaboratory. I always have trouble with that. They are graciously going to work with us to set up a class in online safety taught here on August fourth. It's free, it's from one o'clock to three o'clock. It's, we're going to try to orient it mainly for seniors, but everyone's welcome. So if someone is in their twenties and are, are confused about things like scams and phishing and they don't know much about passwords, please come. But what we're trying to do is, is we move to an online presence and people who are afraid of technology don't know how to handle it, we're going to try to overcome that. We were jokingly calling it SWAT training, seniors willingly accepting technology. Um, I can't say enough good about Magic because they are fantastic. I've, I've actually attended their classes. Uh, but there's only twenty-five words to start with S for senior and N for technology.
It's pretty good.
And I looked at every, I looked at all twenty-five of them and I don't work. Words like spit, don't just don't do it.
No.
Um, anyway, I'm encouraging people to sign up. The registration can be down there. If you don't even know how to use a computer to sign up, we gave you the town's number. Please give us your name, address, and phone number, and I will intercede and do the registration for you. But if you're listening to the sound of my voice online and you say, well, I can run a television, but I can't run a computer, but I'd like to know how, we'd be glad to show you how to do it safely.
Yeah, this is, this is a long time coming too, and it's all one hundred percent thanks to council member Dyer and his, um, legwork and persistence and, um, uh, coordinating, coordination and, and, uh, I'm looking for a word, partnership with, uh, with Magic and, and, uh, and others, so thank you. And I hope that it has a wonderful turnout and it'll be a reason to do it again.
I'd love to.
Yes.
And again, Magic is, they're, they're, they're a great group of people for young people who are interested in programming and things like that. They run hackathons, the good kind of hacking, where you learn to program. That's how you become white hat hackers, or Chief. You got to learn to think like a crook, right?
Very true.
That's where these guys and gals are trained. Um, they're also doing a very good job of bringing young women forward. I can say this from being in those classes. Um, you know, the girls are interested in technology until they hit middle school. And by the time you're in a freshman class, it's practically all guys. That's not good for anybody, and Magic is working to try to change that. I was delighted when I was up there looking at how there's a much better balance of, of gender up there, and, uh, these are very bright kids who want to make the future. And again, uh, Magic is just a great group of people and we're lucky to have them work with us.
Sounds like they picked the right acronym.
It is.
Yeah. Alright, um, are there any other items from staff or council? Any announcements? Anyone know news would like, news that people would like to, uh, share?
No, just briefly, um, I learned that Councilmember Schofield and I are both not going to be here for the July tenth. Is, anybody else have an issue with the July tenth meeting? I can be by Zoom if, if necessary, but.
And I'll be, um, so I just got a new job last week, uh, for a different job than this one. And he, uh, and so I'll be traveling that, uh, week for my work, and I'll be flying out that night.
Okay, understood. So they'll still have, we'll still have a quorum if that's, if it's just the two of them? Thank you for bringing that up. Councilmember Keenan, uh, the mayor has an announcement. My, um, Citizen Advisory Council's, uh, roving town hall, my quarterly roving town hall is scheduled to take place at Shannon Run Park um, on Thursday, this Thursday, at seven PM. And I believe that, uh, Council President Carter is going to make a showing as well. So, um, just wanted to get that word out. All residents, calling all residents, please come to Shannon Run Park at seven PM this Thursday. We'll have some updates, some, some dialogue, and, um, and I will be ready and willing to answer any question or talk about any concern anyone has about anything town-related that I have any control over. Okay, uh, with that, uh, with being there, no other, uh, business that I, I'm aware of, I look for, uh, a motion to adjourn.
A move.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you. So the motion to adjourn is made by Councilman Keenan and seconded by Councilwoman Dyer. All in favor?
Schofield.
Dex on it. I looked right at him and said, Dyer, thank you. Councilman Schofield had made that second. Thank you, Ms. Clark. Here we go. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and unanimously, we are adjourned at, oh my goodness, I don't have the time on my screen, at seven thirty, seven PM. Wow, that almost was a riddle. We weren't even trying. Okay, thanks, guys.